I hereby bring the meeting of the Wairega City Council to order. All please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Please silence your cellphones. This is the time for public comments. Council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section of the meeting except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Brian?
No.
No?
This young man.
Okay, speakers, please speak from the podium. State your name and mailing address so the city staff can respond to you in regards to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so.
My name's Garrett Beck and I just wanted to let you guys know that at Wairega High School, Mr. Westbrook, he was a teacher there, started a clay target club and we have been operating for about six weeks now at the Claybirds right above dog range.
Oh, that's the sound I've been hearing. Okay.
So, we've been going about twice a week for practice on Tuesdays and shooting for score on Sunday.
Awesome.
And we're going to state at the end of the month on the thirty-first.
That's great.
And the first, I think we're shooting on the first and then we're coming home on that Sunday.
Awesome.
So, I just wanted to let you guys know that we have a program like that here in the county.
I didn't know that.
And if you guys know anybody who's in eighth grade or any younger years, you can let them know when they get to the high school. Go talk to Mr. Westbrook and they can try out for the trap team.
Great.
That is awesome.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
They get these snazzy shirts. Have their names.
And your name on it.
They got these hats which you can purchase hats from, from the club. I think you can get ahold of the high school and a lot of these proceeds do go to fund the program. This is the first year for this program and as you all know, in our current political climate, this is huge.
Yes, it is.
To be able to start something with trap shooting with firearms of any kind at a high school level in this state is, this is pretty impressive. How many kids are on this team?
Seventeen so far.
So, so far they've got seventeen, looking to expand into next year.
That's awesome.
And have at least eight or more eighth graders that have already shown interest in the team.
Great, great.
So, initially when they were going to state, they were all looking at just camp, dirt camping in order to go and do this and shoot the next day. There's been enough outpouring of support that now they have, what, you got a couple of trailers rolling down?
Yeah, we got two trailers coming down.
So, they have gotten a lot of support. And mind you, these kids are shooting excellent against the rest of the state. They all turn in their scores on what they're shooting. The kids they're competing against have what, ten thousand dollar shotguns that they're using?
Yeah.
You guys are using the same things they go out and hunt ducks with. They're rusty, you know, dirty and they're, pardon my language, but they're kicking ass. So, this is, we're all really proud of them and we, we would like to see the community get in behind, behind them and help keep this going for the future, so.
I think you have something.
Well, I've read about other high schools mainly in the upper Midwest having trap competitions and I think it's a great idea and it also promotes gun safety and handling guns correctly. So, I think it's a very good program and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Excellent, well said.
It'd be awesome to see the rest of Siskiyou County to get involved so that way it shows support for the whole Siskiyou.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Did you just have a fundraiser or you have one coming up?
You had some, right? I don't think we're doing any fundraisers so far, but we have been participating in cleaning up various events like the NRA dinner that happened a while ago and we helped with the Turkey Federation Dinner. And then we have, I believe it's the Rocky Mountain Oak Foundation Dinner is coming up here in a little bit and we're gonna be cleaning up after that.
Oh, good. Making a little money, good.
And they do a little bit of support actually.
Debbie, I think council member.
And also I think there's a club trying to develop over in the valley too, isn't there?
Uh, yeah, Edna is right alongside us. We're insured through the police department over there, Edna Powell. And Tony Stocker has started his team over there.
So, the reason I even brought it up was any of you lead personnel that are doing events out there, they do provide youth services for cleanup and setup and that kind of thing. So, to help fund, they're not always just asking for money, they're willing to provide a service, which is important to me from my point of view.
Right. Wonderful, great. Well, congratulations, best of luck and we think it's great. Good job. Thanks for coming and telling us all about it. Okay, any other speakers that have a comment, public comment? Come on down.
I think I know everybody and if not, my name is Sarah Flores and I am one of the team that's down there running the Rex Club movement improved as well as the Empire Music Hall. And I'm just here today because I ran into Debbie this morning getting coffee and.
No, I was working.
She was working really hard.
I thought maybe you were at the bar.
No, we were both with Deborah getting coffee this morning and she recommended I pop in. I was chatting with her about some of the new things that we have happening there and she suggested I just come in and invite city council. And though, so for those of you that have not been to the Rex Club in the last year, come back in, we worked really hard. We cleaned it up a lot, not just physically but also the clientele. We're offering really fantastic craft cocktails. We squeeze your juices to order, we're making in-house syrups, we make our own cherries a lot of the time. So, we're really doing a lot of fantastic stuff. And on the Empire side, we're doing all kinds of community events quite regularly, comedy and live music and just lots of really fun things. In the past two weeks especially, I started working pretty close with Discover Siskiyou to really do some even more, more for Wairega. And so, that's something that we're actively working on and so I'm sure in the coming months you'll be seeing more of me as well as some of the other small business owners in Wairega as we kind of build this momentum that really we're on the cusp of, we really feel like we're creating in the downtown district, which is kind of a tourist, tourism attraction. We're actively doing that. So, if you haven't been and I'm asking for your support, we're asking for you to come and check it out, come and look at our events. I'm bringing you our little May calendar so you can take them. And if you're available, the very first art hop is next Friday, the tenth. We're actually doing something really fun. We've chosen to focus on the art of flavors and seasonally available flavors. And so, for each art hop, we're actually doing a craft cocktail and small bites pairing based around what is locally and fresh in season. The May date is actually mushrooms because that's what is, you know, right now.
You have mushroom cocktails?
No, but you have, let me tell you this, okay? Listen to this spin though, so maybe not mushrooms, but something that's really popular in the craft cocktail world right now is kombucha.
Oh, yeah.
Right? So, we're, we're playing with that aspect of it, which is really fun. And if you don't love mushrooms, then later on in the summer we will have berries and peaches and squash and all kinds of other stuff as well. So, I encourage you to check that out. Come and see us, visit our website, rexclubempire.com, which is updated all the time with all kinds of great stuff. And I hope that we'll have the city's support as we move forward in creating more of a, of a tourist district in Wairega.
And I would also like to thank you for hosting when our Siskiyou Revitalization Network Tour Group came through. We started, of course, we started with coffee in the morning where you guys saw each other up at Zephyr's. But then went through the whole day and ended at the Rex that evening. And I understand they just had a great time and you gave a nice tour, so thank you.
We had a fantastic time and that's something else as well, just everyone's aware. We've begun being more than happy to host whatever we can in the Empire side, especially for the community members. We just, last minute, earlier this week, there was actually a web seminar from the California State Arts Association that was specific about rural communities and how our arts districts can influence the economy. It was really, really great and so it was really fantastic because we found out about it about three hours before the event. We posted it on social media and said, "We just heard about this, but you're welcome to come." And eight small business owners in, in related fields from Wairega showed up.
Oh, right.
Just like that. So, we're eager and we really are motivated to make more stuff happen. So, just as an example, and we're actually hosting the Economic Development, EDD, next Wednesday.
EDC.
EDC next.
Yeah.
EDD is who I pay taxes to.
It's not the tax agency, it's the Economic Development Council.
I believe that it's Wednesday, but there is going to be a meeting there that we're, one of those days next week. And it's specific to kind of the Discover Siskiyou and how they, people can apply for funds for that. So, we're always open to host things like that whenever.
Wonderful. Would you tell us just a little bit, just quickly, about what happened when you had some film, a film crew come in?
Absolutely, yeah.
What happened there?
Yeah, I think what you're talking about is Netflix. So, there was, we've been hosting comedy shows on the Empire side for about three years now. There always a third Friday, they are always a different show. We pull comedians from usually Sacramento, sometimes Portland area. These are professional touring comedians, they're fantastic. And so, we actually got approached by one of the comedians who had previously performed at our venue. He was approached by Netflix and told he could, he could pick his own venue and he picked Wairega. He picked the Empire Music Hall, which was really exciting. So, I just got confirmation, I believe that's currently on Netflix in Great Britain. They're working on getting it on the US, so I mean, it's working towards that and it's kind of coming our way. Something that was really exciting about that event is that we actually had twenty people who got a bus in Sacramento, came to Wairega, stayed two nights here, came to both filmings both nights. And that was, that was really kind of a, an emphasis for us to continue trying to, you know, build more of that here, which is great. And just another note on the cocktails, if you read the newspaper, perhaps you've heard that we have a bartender that's been competing nationally in cocktail competitions. Elizabeth Sherman, who's been at the Rex for about six years, was really an underutilized asset. She's phenomenal, she is the chef of the cocktail world, she's brilliant. And she's recently been to two national competitions, finished within the top eleven of the state. And she's competing in the Bay Area where you have these San Francisco craft cocktail people that are, that's what they do for life, for careers, and she's doing really, really well. So, I really do want you to come in because we really are doing something that is approachable for Wairega, but for people that drive off the interstate are really impressed.
That's great. Well, thank you for all the.
So, I'll see you all soon.
Yes.
Oh, you were gonna pass those out, right?
I will, I'm gonna pass it down.
With the events.
I have a question.
Sure, sir.
Can you not tell us who this comedian is so when we're looking on Netflix?
Jake Daniels, Tony DeJamco, two names. Chris Mason was also there, he is one of the writers for the Ella DeGeneres Show.
Oh, wow.
He actually brought his Emmy, he brought his Emmy.
And he chose Wairega.
That's amazing.
He's all right with us. This is awesome, great.
Great, thank you so much. You find the Rex on one side and Empire opposite side.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you're doing to bring life to downtown.
Happy birthday.
Well, thank you.
My son Zach's birthday.
Oh, really? Happy birthday to Zach. Bye, thanks for coming. Okay, next item on the agenda, discussion. Oh, we have one more.
Lorenzo Love, fourth grade.
Lorenzo.
Community yard sale is Saturday at the Fairgrounds.
Oh.
That doesn't seem to get much publicity.
No. Okay, community yard sales, Sunday, Saturday, what time?
Eight to two.
Eight to two, great. Thank you for letting us know, Lorenzo. Anyone else? No? Okay. Item number one, discussion possible action consent calendar. All matters under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience. Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Thank, thank you. Any member of the audience wishes to comment on an item, the city manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from April nineteenth through May second. B, approval of minutes of the meeting held April eighteenth, twenty nineteen. What are the wishes of the council? Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and several seconds. Did you get that Liz?
I got enormous.
Okay, he was closer. Okay, all in favor, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Item number two, discussion possible action alternatives for Montague Pool used while Ringy Pool is out of service. That's my item and I just, and I see that Buzzy's here, so Buzzy, any help you want to give me is welcome. I just wanted you all to know that we've been working on this. We've had a lot of meetings, I just want you to know. There have been, we have had eight meetings with two hundred and thirty-four attendees at eight community meetings, five open meetings, public meetings, one with Siskiyou Opportunity Center, one with Little League and one with the Senior Center because it's about the whole park, not just about the pool. Four hundred and sixty-five ideas for improvement generated at the meetings now. Granted, some of them are the same, Paul has been at all of the meetings except one, two. Okay, many of these ideas were the same and will be tabulated. A report will be prepared for review by the stakeholder group. The stakeholder group has been meeting and meeting and meeting with six committees, doing a great job. So, you know, if you need any more information, you know, we can give it. And Buzzy, I don't know if you have anything you want to share?
On May twenty-second will be the culminating meeting where Robin has, will present all that information of what the top ten areas are that people will come across, so that's on the twenty-second.
What time and where, please?
Community Center.
Six thirty at the Community Center.
Yeah, six thirty.
If you want to show your support, Buzzy can give you the, put you in contact with Luann Singleton. For ten dollars you can get a shirt like this.
See his beautiful shirt.
You're supporting Splash and you're just making the community aware.
Right. Right, it's, it's pretty awesome.
They also have stickers for your window, yeah.
But I also wanted to let you know what we're doing to help the kids of our community out while our pool is still not built because, as you know, we're going to be going out for a grant, estate parks and rent grant. But until such time as we get the grant and the pool is built, I had a meeting with the mayor of the city of Montague and their pool manager. Buzzy, you were there, Amy was there, we had Splash there, the city of Wairega there and the city of Montague. And we met in Matt's office because he wasn't there. So, thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Anyway, so we had a pretty in-depth discussion, okay, what are we gonna do? Last year we bought bus passes that were underutilized. So, we talked to some of the moms, you know, why are the kids not using the passes? And we found out that, can't say as I blame them, the mothers don't want to put their children on a bus with no supervision because we're talking the stage bus, not a school bus. So, we started brainstorming about how we could get past that and actually talked with Reda and talked with Renee, talked with Steve and Matt. And so, we came up with an idea and here's the idea. I spoke with Scott Eastman, who is the executive director of the YMCA. The city does not have the ability to hire, well, at this time, we don't have the ability to hire someone who would supervise kids because in order to be in charge of children, you have to have certain things. You have to have certifications and all kinds of training and a lot of things that you need. However, the YMCA does have those employees that are already certified. So, I spoke with Scott after the meeting the other night and I said, "So, Scott, what do you think? Can the city work with you? Can you, can you have an employee that will get on the bus with the kids at ten fifteen, ten forty-five, ten forty-five AM at the, at the stage? Ride with them over to Montague, stay with them, get them back and, oh, by the way, gets, the bus gets to the school at, or not the school, but the pool, next door to City Hall that used to be an old school. Anyway, at eleven o'clock, but it's not open for, for public swim until noon. So, the city of Montague, the mayor of Montague has said that she has, she has people on staff and volunteers that can help with a summer program for arts or some kind of recreation that they can do for one hour from eleven o'clock to twelve o'clock when the bus, when the pool opens. So, then that person would stay there for that and then, you know, kind of watch over the kids. And then at four fifteen, when the bus comes back through and leaves for Montague, this person would be in charge of getting those kids back on the bus, start corralling them around four, get them to, in front of City Hall over there by four fifteen and then back to Montague by four thirty or back to Wairega from Montague. So, Scott said, "Sure, we could do that." So, if the city pays for it, which, you know, we've already been talking about doing, we were just talking about a method, how do we do that? So, the thing is, it's, it's not in our budget, so we have to take a look at it, we have to take a look at the budget, see how we're gonna do that. The good news is, is that the bus passes are half the cost of last year. Last year we paid forty dollars per kid, this year it's twenty. And the local transportation commission reduced that fee. So, we're gonna pay for the bus passes if this all gets approved and then we would pay the YMCA. We're thinking probably fifteen dollars an hour, it would be about twelve dollars an hour for the, for the person and then the rest would go for their admin because they have to have somebody, you know, supervise them. So, I told them I would bring it up, we're going to meet with Scott and, is it Brandon? I think, over the YMCA, we're gonna meet with Brandon and Brandon will actually be the supervisor over the program. So, we're gonna meet with them and we're going to, you know, we're gonna hammer out the program. And we're gonna decide, we're going to give some options on how many days a week. Is it three days a week? Is it two days a week or is it five days a week? We need to look at the cost and then we need to talk about what we can afford. But that's where we are right now and we want to get this done by the middle of June. Kids get out, what, the end of that first week or second week? Pardon?
June eighth.
June eighth. But we want to make sure that we average, we do a good enough job of advertising this program. The police helped us with this last year, maybe you guys can help us, but we need to advertise it, we need to get it on the radio and in the newspaper and flyers. Somebody suggested going to the school before school's out, you know, handing out flyers, going to the school classes and making sure that the kids know, then we have to decide, you know, are we gonna have it over at the police department again, are we gonna have it here or do they have to go to the stage office? Because there's a little form, I think we made a form last year, didn't we, Reda? The kids had to fill out the form, you guys had it, I think. And so, we would do that again because it has to be the student's name and information that has to be signed off by a parent.
What's the capacity of the bus?
I think it's forty.
Forty, so that would be the limit then of each day as escorted people, so.
Probably.
Kind of first come, first served to get on the list.
Exactly, that's what we will be telling people, it's, yeah, sign up quickly because, you know, we're, we may run out of seats. But keep in mind that this bus pass is still good all summer long. All summer long. We're talking about a six to eight week program probably, we're talking about mid-June till the end of July. And then by then, then kids are starting to get ready for school, the first part of August.
John, I didn't understand, was the swim pass going to be included also?
No.
Okay.
And not unless we, not unless we purchase them. And they're three dollars a piece, I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's something we didn't discuss. We didn't talk about the swim passes.
I think the Montague Pool is just like we did, has various options, you know, it's a daily rate, they have a punch card like we did, a discounted, you know, ten swims for twenty bucks or whatever it is. Or they also have season passes, so I think that would be an option that I would think that the kids would need to purchase that on their own.
Well, it's, but it's a good item for discussion, you know.
If it's access and affordability issue, that's something you might want to.
Right.
That's true, that's a really good point. So, that'll be something then we can talk about too, for the budgeted item.
Yeah, like soon.
And then, yeah, and then what we'll do is we'll bring it back to the council and we'll have options. You know, this, this, this option would cost this much money, this option would cost, you know, have it like in three different sections or two, whatever we decide. But I just wanted you guys to know, that's what we're working on.
Good.
Any questions?
The, paying the employee that has the, the ECE or the credential to go with them, they pay them twelve bucks an hour.
That's what Scott said.
And then they want three dollars an hour for administrative costs?
Then you got payroll taxes and all this other stuff too.
Oh, so they, so they want that for, they want that to, then not for administrative, they want it for.
Overhead.
All this, yeah. Well, there's difference between payroll taxes and overhead.
Right.
And administrative cost is processing everything, but.
Well, you're welcome to sit down with us. We haven't had that discussion yet.
If they're looking at that for administration, that concerns me because that's well over, I mean, that's.
Three dollars a kid?
Yeah, it's like twenty, twenty-two percent and that's a whole lot to administrate out.
I think it's payroll taxes.
Okay, if it's payroll taxes, that'd be different.
Yeah, okay, but we can have that discussion.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind.
I'd just like to get that cleared.
You really need to decide this by the meeting of the sixteenth.
Yes, we do.
Because if you wait until the June meeting, June sixth or seventh.
We're planning on getting it done, I talked to Amy to, this afternoon and we're talking about having an agenda item on the sixteenth agenda.
Right, because one of the other things is the June sixth meeting is graduation.
Right.
And that's norm. For Jackson Street and that's normally a meeting that we don't hold.
Right, so we have to do it on the sixteenth.
Yeah, and we could have a special meeting if the council desired, but the sixth is not a good day for council, for a whole lot of reasons usually.
No, no, no.
It would be nice to see, a- as we used to do when Jerry Jarabin, I'll beat it again, when Jerry Bob were there, that, that they, superintendent used to look at the calendar at the beginning of the year, figure out, I mean, figure out when things were going on and then when adminis, when athletic events were going on, not graduation, when athletic events were going on, there was a provision made. He'd always call, he would tell city manager, block this lot over here so, because we're gonna be, if something overlapped and I, that's something that I brought up. I think we need to, ma- madam mayor, you probably need to have a talk with the new superintendent, Chris Harris, when he comes in.
Okay, that sounds good.
Because there needs to be a little cooperation between district and city.
I agree. You want to sit in on that?
Also, I'd be glad to sit in with you.
Because you have the knowledge.
Well, I've got the history from Bob Singleton on the building, the school, the dollar that was paid for and, you know, kind of who's responsible for what, so.
Right, super, that's good.
I know the meetings usually were, there were two things going on. Usually, some council members had kids of some sort, you know, involved and it also affected the party.
We used to just have more communication from the district. We used to, the superintendent communicated to the city manager.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's the end of that report, so we're going on to, thank you, Buzzy, for being here. Did you want to add anything from Splash?
Thanks for all your support and all the help, you guys showing up and.
You're doing a great job, Buzzy. You've, you've been, you've been at every meeting and you've been every step of the way. We've been doing without, we wouldn't be doing this without your help.
That's right, thank you for all your work. We appreciate it.
I don't know if somebody before, but the, the Desker Pool is not going to open this summer.
No.
No?
I did not hear that.
We're at that, we're in a phase now where those swim team kids that we've had that were lifeguards now are all going to op college and different jobs.
Oh.
And because there hasn't been many local swim teams, there aren't those kids that are really interested in those swimming programs.
But the weed pool is open.
The weed pool is barely going to be open.
Wow, and the Edna Pool is open.
The Edna Pool is going.
I love driving by and seeing that Desker Pool open.
Yeah, that's a shame.
With everybody in it, it's.
And it, you know, it may come around, I don't know, but because I noticed there was lots of people wall, if they're wall do it, well, you have to take the lifeguard class to do it. And they have to go to writing or metro to do that.
Oh, really?
So, they'll open late if, if at all.
If at all.
Yeah, they're still working on it, but.
Wow.
Wow, that's a shame. Okay, thank you for letting us know and thank you for all you've done. You guys are great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to item number three, discussion possible action update on contract process. Contract for the Chamber of Commerce, Chamber is here and city manager Steve, did you want to take this one?
Yes, mayor members of the council, I want to draw your attention to the two-page proposal that the chamber put together that I think gives more detail. The last time we talked about it was more of a contract thing and there were a lot of questions that came up as a result of that. So, Amanda and I, well, I asked for things, Amanda delivered and put together sort of what, what their proposal would be. So, there's a few things that I wanted to mention in here. One is that the, the event is one, one area where we had a lot of discussion about. The chamber is looking at having the Thanksgiving parade or holiday parade, whatever it's called, on the.
Small Business Saturday.
I keep saying, I keep saying the twenty-fourth, but it changes everything.
Small Business, Small Business, Small Business Saturday.
Saturday after Thanksgiving, but also merging the, the night alikes with that event so that there will still be a tree lighting ceremony at that time. And then as they discussed the last meeting, they're looking at having the July fourth event. And so, for this year, we would, the proposal is to include that in the events that the, the city is sponsoring through the contract essentially. There's a little bit of concern of, you know, it's a first-year event. Usually like to try the event a little bit, make sure that everything's gonna go fine before you pop it in the contract. But I think that since they know they're gonna do it this, this year, that that makes sense. And it is a one-year contract, so if something happens to where that isn't there, then I, I think just, one of the things I want to emphasize is that they need a little bit of flexibility on their end[1789.41] One of the things I wanna emphasize is that they need a little bit of flexibility on their end, two, to make different things, um, happen. And, and, and work, and so we wanna, we wanna work with them. So that was the, on the event thing. Uh, one of the other discussions was, there was some, uh, criticism of the, where the chamber office is. Whereas at least one member of the council calls it the secret office. Um, so the, uh, the chamber looked at, you know, what are the options of, you know, what way to take to move somewhere different? And approximately between rent utilities, internet and phone, that the current location's about six grand in that neighborhood. And estimating a new, a cost of a new location on Minor Street would be close to fifteen thousand. And I know there's been some discussions that, uh, the chambers had some discussions, and then I know that there's been other discussions. The numbers for the rental of some of those facilities don't match between those discussions, so that's a little bit unknown. But prior to jumping into that, I wanted to make sure that we talked about, uh, moving. Eh, in addition to that, there's two different ways to do that. Prior to two thousand and seven, uh, for a long period of time, evidently, the city rented the space where the chamber was. And the city also had the responsibility of finding a sublassor for the other part of it, so that it was affordable. And, um, so we could use that kind of model, it's just that we would not want to. There's no reason we would wanna get into having another sublassor, so eh, it would have to be a single thing. So we could do it that way, we could talk with the chamber about, you know, where they're located and how much rent, so either way like that. But, but something in there, um, really the amounts or what's in the, this, this thing, how we get there, is another, um, situation. Now, where the chamber is now, as they mentioned before, they really can't be open on, on Saturdays. And in fact, the chamber, uh, has been. Closed on Saturdays more than has been open on Saturdays, probably all, most of the time since I've been here, so.
Much.
Um, so the estimate for a part-time employee to be in that space, if it was a different space, is about two grand a year. Um, that comes, you know, that, I kinda did the math, and that seemed like, at eight hours a day, it'd be about fifteen. Fifteen bucks an hour, something like that. And, you know, like, like we just talked about, when you include some of the payroll taxes in there. Um, I think the hours might have been a little shorter.
Yeah.
I looked at the proposal. So, um, kind of what I'm looking for is some guidance. We can, we'll come back with a, a contract, we need to run it by the city attorney, we need to put in some language on things like the, um. As we talked about last time, having a, a point in time where we look at, um, this, this is proposed to be an annual contract. Chamber would prefer a longer contract in some ways, but in some ways, an annual might be the best way to do it here. But to build in so that we're talking about which events are covered by the, the city sponsorship, if you will. And if it doesn't change, it's a pretty easy meeting, but if it does change, then we would want it to be well in advance of the renewal date. And then there's some other, uh, language that I think we would need to kinda work out, some of which you've already seen, and some of which we haven't, uh, really written. But before we go down that path, I wanna make sure these big picture things that we understood, you know, vet list kind of okay? Do you want to discuss whether they move or not? Um, if they move, do you want to look at Saturdays? Cuz there's some fiscal impacts to all of this.
Right.
And I didn't wanna dive too deep in, and, you know, chase down a bunch of rabbit holes if indeed, uh, you didn't wanna go that way. And again, not too many meetings left before the end of the fiscal year, so.
Right.
We, we need to do that.
If we were open six hours a day on a Saturday, and you were open every weekend, you'd be, you're looking at about, uh, forty-six, forty-seven hundred dollars.
Like ten to four, right.
Yeah, six hours.
Yeah.
Looking at about, just under five thousand.
You're talking about, uh, you're gonna.
Every weekend, we're talking from Memorial to.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, you're talking about summertime.
Memorial Day to Labor Day.
I didn't actually say that.
That's okay. Well, I read that in there too, I should've.
Right.
Sure season is generally Memorial Day.
And then where, wh- are, do we have any sites that are preferred?
There's a couple available on Minor Street.
And also, when I did the math on that, I come up with seventy-eight hundred rather than fifteen thousand. To me, twelve times six fifty comes to seventy-eight hundred.
Withholding?
No, uh, for the rent.
Oh, the rent.
Yeah, so.
Right, that was, that was an estimate, that'd be something.
Right.
You know, we can talk about.
Yes, but seventy-eight's more appealing to me than fifteen.
Well, that was.
I think we should explore it.
I definitely think we should explore it.
No, that would be the cost of it.
If it's something that they're interested in, I, I think it's worth it.
I would like to explore it.
I would too. And the city, you know, you're right, if the city, yeah, I, I definitely think the city should pay for it.
I missed a point. I was, I was talking with this council member, and I missed what another council member said. But I heard you chime in and say, I think that's a good idea.
We're just saying, I think, we're joining, and I were just, Madam Mayor, and I were saying that we'd like to explore it.
Right.
The location.
The location, okay, so explore a location.
Yeah, I mean, the whole.
All right.
The whole square.
That's what you wanna do. You wanna kind of explore the big ideas here and.
Right.
And, and try and tie it down.
Well, what is, what is, uh, your guys' opinion on moving? Might as well step up to the plate.
And see what you think.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, like I said, kind of in the proposal, I think we're definitely open to it.
Okay.
Uh, we just don't have finances to do it.
Which we're aware of that.
Right.
So you would be okay with it if we paid for it? The city, right? Is that what you're saying? That's what I'm hearing.
We don't have the means to do it.
Oh, no, I understand.
That's what I said, if we pay for it.
And I'm not opposed to that. I mean, us paying for it, yeah.
We've looked, we've tried.
I know.
And the only reason why we did come up with a larger amount of money is because when we had spoken, I know there's been two different conversations. When I had spoken with Megan regarding a location, it was a totally different price. It was six hundred dollars, not including any utilities. Um, and so, you know, we incorporated water in there, trash, internet, phone, power, so things that we're not paying currently. Um, it's all included in our current rent. Um, so that was, that's kinda how we came up with that larger number.
Right.
Just because we didn't have the other conversation with her about, um.
So, so the document you've given us is based on your conversations with the chamber?
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think we, I think we need to explore further.
Right.
Okay.
I agree.
What do you think, John?
Explore further.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I like, I mean, I like the idea of a better location for sure, to get some more recognition. And I'd like, you know, the idea of, of having, being open on Saturdays through Memorial, through Labor Day, just, just like we used to be years ago.
Right.
Jamie, you probably can't get into Jamie's building because.
No.
He has to secure it for himself, right?
Right.
He has to secure his business.
It's his own, yes.
So that's, yeah.
Um, doesn't the chamber own that building on Main Street?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, on Main Street, yeah, that, but the problem is, the sewer system is not.
No, I know, but I'm saying, can't you just sell it and?
There's a lot of other little problems. Steve can, if kinda go on, elaborate on that one.
And, and that's the extent of the question, I just wanna make sure that I'm answering.
Do we have any other questions from the council members? No, I, I just, I like the way that it's headed. It looks really good to me, but.
And I just wanted to make, mention that there is, um, I call it the shed, that's inappropriate, but there is a.
It's an A-frame.
Is it, there's a small, there's a small A-frame, and the, uh, reason that they moved out of there was that the sewer line, which is. A fairly long sewer line connected to.
The museum.
Another, to the museum, is, uh, crushed. So, so there would be, to get it right, actually would cost a fair amount of, uh, money. The other issue there is it, it is visible.
Mm-hmm.
And horrible parking.
Right.
There is no parking.
There's never really any parking. I always wondered what, what, why it was there when I moved to town in eighties, you know?
It was a building that was given to the chamber, and we had the, the paper where it was dedicated by the city council. In the eighteen hundreds or nineteen twenties or something, a long, long time ago.
It used to be a Rite Aid parking lot.
Is that where it was? The Rite Aid parking lot?
Oh, is that?
What was it?
Chamber office.
And it was in the Rite Aid parking lot, and they moved it out there.
Wow.
Huh.
It's exciting.
And there, I just want a really quick note. The reason we haven't thought about selling it is, since we do own it, um. And we don't pay rent on that monthly, we use that as our storage.
Storage, yeah. Works perfect for that.
Yeah.
Heck, yeah.
Yes.
Rite Aid, what was, what was there before Rite Aid?
What Rite Aid was it?
What Rite Aid, yeah.
No, not Rite Aid, it was Thrifty.
Value Giant.
Value Giant.
Yep, Value Giant. Now you're starting to date. I remember that.
Now you're dating yourself.
So what, I, if I'm hearing this correctly, I'm hearing that we're going to send it back to staff to explore further. That we like the direction, what this looks like, and that you're going to come back to us with, uh, more accurate figures?
I just, I just wanna add too, that I like the list of, of events.
Me too.
I like the combination on the holiday parade and tree lighting, all one day. I think that's awesome. We wanted to do that years ago, and I think it's a cool way of doing it. And to jump back in for the Fourth of July event, that's great.
Awesome.
That's really great, so, no, everything else, I, I feel is great. It was just a matter of, if we can figure out a location, it'd be awesome.
And the, and the figures.
And the numbers, yeah.
So I'm gonna ask this, this question simply because, um, I like things to go through at the end after I write them up. Is there any other concerns that are not addressed in this proposal that you can think of right now that we need to take a look at during this time? Really, that's part of what I'm looking for, direction. I like to hear that we're heading in the right direction. That gives us some confidence, we can bring you back something that you can, um, look at. But any other issues?
I don't think the Saturday staffing needs to start at nine o'clock. I think ten to three or four is adequate. Because the tourists is already focused on dinner after that, or, yeah. So that can cut down.
Nine to four or ten to four?
Ten.
Ten to three.
Ten to four, it's where a business.
Ten to three would work for me.
Ten to three maybe, yeah, yeah.
When we, when we, when we used to sit in on it, it was, yeah, ten to.
Ten to three.
Yeah, three was, well, we did do ten to four, but it was, it was nine to four, something, I think, but it was, yeah, after three o'clock.
After three, it was dead.
You didn't get anybody.
Where was that, Dwayne?
Huh?
Where was that?
Oh, it was when we were.
Down the corner down here.
When the chamber was at Bella Arts.
Yep.
So would it be safe just to, to, to a- ask the city manager to look at a six-hour day and then you can figure out? We can always go, we can always go five, we ha- if we want to, but we just look at the cost of that. Cuz that, is that, is six hours the most we would go?
Yeah, that would be most, that's.
I think so.
That's, that's a recommendation, and I'm assuming that we would want, you know, to get someone there.
Yeah.
Is that enough hours to attract somebody? And I, I just wanna mention that I have another staff member that raised her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She usually is going to correct me.
I was, I remember, and then a member of the audience.
I just thought another option would be for the tourism months, Tuesday through Saturday, and not be open on Monday.
Oh, right, right.
The two days off.
That is definitely an option.
Monday's, Monday's traditionally a day when private sector is gonna close.
Yeah, she's trying to talk.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the reason that we, we didn't, um, wanna go with that idea was because since we are also, we're business oriented and.
You have members.
We really do need to be available for our businesses.
Yeah, true, true.
Okay, Don Marie.
Um, Steve asked if there was any other, I'm wondering, did we get the stage figured out?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We approved it last time for, uh, Fourth of July and Gold Rush Staves.
Right, but then it was.
No, that's it.
Yeah, okay.
Um, yeah, I think, uh, I'm hearing that, you know, it's going in the right direction. We like the looks of it, but we wanna hear more on figures, rental, cost. You know, that kinda stuff, but, um, uh, we'd like that to come back on the sixteenth.
Yeah.
Because, because the contract needs to start by July one.
If, if we don't make, and, and we may be able to make the sixteenth, if we don't make the sixteenth, I would tell you that I would probably recommend a special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, just, just because of that.
That's probably more realistic. You've gotta do it through dawn. I don't think the same.
Oh, that's right, it's gotta go through the attorney, that's right.
Oh, yeah.
So, but, but we'll, we'll, we'll work on that. It's just, I, I, I'm just telling you, hey, if we can do the sixteenth great, and if not, then.
And Amanda can bring her baby.
Yes, she did tonight.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Your baby's quiet, yeah, very quiet.
So quiet.
Yeah.
Give it some time, guaranteed.
There is one more issue if, if the, uh, utilities are gonna be included, if we're speaking specifically of one location. And I would support the utilities being included there.
I agree, otherwise it would be a burden.
Yes.
We, yeah, we, I, I think we, uh, staff agrees with that, is that the utilities need to be included, uh, and if at all possible, because of the, um. The, the risk to the financial feasibility of it if, if they're not.
Right, no, I agree. I remember, um, especially those winter time utilities, you used to command the old, at the IOF or the Oddfellow's building. Oh, remember how that was like, we were always worried. We tried, we kept it pretty darn cold in there.
It was horrible.
Even with, looking in with the dams coming out and the amount of what our electricity, how high it will go here, per kilowatt hour after the dams come out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be horrendous.
Okay, so I think you have your marching orders?
Yes.
You know, and you're gonna come back, and we wanna thank you.
Yes.
Lake the Chamber for working with us on this. Looks like it's, it looks awesome. Good job, you guys. And best of luck to you next week on your baby.
I know.
Is it for sure May seventh, or is it, oh, uh, maybe?
May ninth.
May ninth, okay, may ninth, okay. That's a week from tonight.
I scheduled it that way.
You scheduled that way?
Good for you, okay.
No control issues.
Yeah.
Right, not at all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, okay. Alrighty, so we're going on to city treasurer's report. So, uh, Rheta, discussion, possible action, acceptance of cash balances report, March twenty nineteen. Budget of review and expenditures with year-to-date actuals through March twenty nineteen. Bye, thank you. Quarterly treasurer's investment report, third quarter fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and quarterly fiscal performance report, third quarter fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Rheta.
Poor Rheta.
Um, so we're gonna go, um, a little bit quickly unless you have specific questions.
Okay.
But, um, you can see the cash balances are even, um, in April, they've gone up. There's a couple of April events that happened that I wanna call out, and that's the closing of the USDA. So we were reimbursed back for two point seven million, so you're going to see that come back. Um, so that we can debt service for the next forty years on it.
Capital building project, it says one point five two million.
In, right, so that's the deficit balance. So you'll see it flip around when we get the proceeds back.
We haven't got that yet?
From the USDA. Um, that, this is as of March, and it came in.
March thirty-first.
And the settlement date was, closing date was four twenty-two, and funds were received.
Oh, funds were received, okay.
Yeah, so I did wanna call that out.
Okay.
And then also, um, on the special capital, on the capital grants, um, you'll see we're down about eight hundred thousand. Um, we had been waiting for one large payment, um, and that came through on the stip in April, I'm pleased to say. And I believe that was about five hundred and forty-nine thousand that was received in.
Oh, great.
And, um, we're hearing, um, so I just kind of, we're, there's some other funds. Oh, also received in were, um, some of the, um, bridge funding.
Oh.
So, yeah, it won't quite flip around on that, but, um, we're going in the right direction. And then finally, um, in the capital projects fund, we expect to receive probably, um, in May or early June, hopefully. Reimbursement on our prop line grants.
Good.
So we've kind of got a little out there, but um everybody rallied together. Um, certainly thanking Cindy Lynch at Public Works who spent a lot of hours um on this. Um, I can tell you there is so much work there for one person. It's, you know, and it's complex, high-level work. Um, and you may be hearing more from us on that um in the future, but um, I could tell you that there, the key positions of in Public Works of this is is critical to our financial um health.
Under the capital, under the capital building project?
For cap- managing capital projects and keeping every aspect of it managed.
Well, we do miss Jeanette.
Yeah, well, there's 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 a.
Cause Jeanette could do it in her sleep.
Lot of projects on our our um to-do list, so um I'll leave it at that till we can talk further. Um, cause I think Matt's got something coming your way, or Steve does here in the next next meeting possibly. Um.
Looks like the Rosen Street funding is good, four hundred thousand?
Um, right, I did wanna talk to that a little bit in the budget to, or budget performance. Um, so I'm gonna skip to that kind of quickly. And that's, looks like the report that um did I pull that out? Right, it's kind of the one that I know it's hard to read where it's the two up divided.
Yeah, I had a hard time.
This one?
It's called year-to-date fiscal performance report.
Oh, that one's, yeah.
And it should be.
It's it's not this one, oh, okay. One is better. Somebody say it again?
The last one, I think.
Yep.
And it's stapled together.
Right.
Okay, got it.
You can spin it, right, Dwayne?
It says city of what, Reno, Utah?
Just a little over there. There you go, yeah, everything. Um, so.
Very funny, Paul.
The thing on that I just was gonna call out is um we uh I have yet to do to nine months of chargebacks of the fleet um department. So that's why you're seeing such a large balance on that. Um, so a little behind there on getting those chargebacks out. And then also on the capital outlay, um, we're a little over expended. Mostly that is timing of the construction. We thought we'd kind of have more done in the prior fiscal year that rolled into the current fiscal year. And so we'll be bringing mid um late budget revisions to you, um, possibly now. If it will more than likely be in June, unfortunately, um, at that, either at the special meeting or the regular meeting in June. Um, the other thing in the second page of that, if you flip it over, um, within the streets, we're going to probably, I'll be working with Public Works on kind of reallocating some efforts in the departments, um, shifting some funds from storm sewer maintenance into um street maintenance.
Can we do that?
Mm-hmm.
I thought the money came down in pots and you had to use it for one specific purpose.
Well, most of this is our match.
Uh.
So um we transfer over, I think, four hundred thousand. So um, yes, but however, though, um, your gas tax money can be used um for all street infrastructure assets or things in the right of way.
Right, I know that, right, I know that.
Um, so there'll be a little more moving around um within that as we're coming into year enclose. Um, overall, their budget's fine. It's just kind of when, which little, which functional areas. And you kind of never know exactly where, you know, you look at your trend lines and where we think we're going to be, and sometimes you have to true that up. But I just wanted to call those two things out um to you, but other than that, I think we're on track. We're closing out the year strong. Um, and um no areas of concern really yet. Um, other than we probably, as always, will be challenged to meet budget in the parks area and we'll probably have some need additional funding. We knew going into the budget cycle, we would be unable to do that, so I kind of don't wanna surprise anyone in that area. If that, um, I can answer any specific questions in that time.
Any questions from council? No? Looks really good. I I do have to tell you, I was worried about the other thing that we were talking about though, but uh we'll talk more about that. About the the project oversight and the problems that we're having with that.
Challenges that we've got some good plans for.
Okay.
Oh, she's so positive.
I like that, but I still, I mean, good, but I'm still worried, so uh we'll find out more, right?
Right.
We'll find out soon, soon.
Very soon. Soon, we got a plan.
You got a plan, all right, I like the plans. Okay, thank you, any questions?
I'd like to move acceptance of the city treasurer's report for uh March two thousand nineteen.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Uh, to accept the city treasurer's report, does that include all of the one, two, three, four?
Oh, yeah, it does.
All four uh reports, thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Reda.
Thank you.
Good information. City managers' report.
I'm just gonna mention two things, uh, and then I'm gonna turn it over to um.
Can I say one thing? Just one thing. I wanna welcome back the chief.
Yes.
Welcome back, chief. We've missed you.
It's a lot.
Lieutenant Betts has done a great job. You should be worried.
He's like. Oh, boy.
I think school antennas go out.
Anyway.
We have to have him back as well.
Yes.
Um, I sent you an email that said that uh last Saturday was a uh free, you know, if you have expired prescription drugs, you can turn them in. And uh I got, I know there's two two days in advance, so it didn't give you a lot of time to collect them all, but evidently statewide or countywide, there were five hundred pounds plus of drugs could, now, I am trying to imagine five hundred pounds.
Five hundred pounds of drugs?
Five hundred pounds.
Legal drugs?
Well, yeah, these are prescription drugs, kinda like when I I last, there's a whole long story here, but the last time I had opiates in my house, I took them and turned them into that.
Yeah.
Um, because I had surgery or something, so anyway, but I already did that on the previous year. The other thing that I wanted to point out is, I mentioned one of these dates already, which was June sixth, uh, that we are going to propose not having a council meeting on that night. Uh, the other one is July fourth, which is usually a really lousy day to have a council meeting. So we're also looking at uh canceling that. Um, I like to uh take the opportunity to uh.
I'll see you in November.
Yes, see you in November, to to uh, you know, work out vacations around those things, but um.
So you're talking about June sixth, so then our next meeting wouldn't be until the twentieth, or would we have it on the thirteenth and twenty-seventh?
Right.
I I suspect that we, well, normally what we do when we cancel the meetings is that we give, okay.
She's gonna.
You don't need to cancel. It's written in the code. If it falls on a holiday, it happens the following Tuesday, but I believe you and Debbie do not have uh Tuesdays open.
Yeah, but June sixth, June sixth is not a holiday.
No, we're talking Fourth of July is a holiday.
Yeah.
I was looking at June sixth, so I was thinking if we're not gonna meet because they're having um eighth grade graduation, then why wouldn't we have it the next week?
We could.
Wait a second.
The thirteenth to twenty-seventh sound good to me, we could just change it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna be in Sacramento for the for the League of Cities thing.
On the twenty-seventh, I won't be here.
On the thirteenth and fourteenth.
So two of.
So that's not gonna work?
Yeah, so.
Well, you guys could.
But the eleventh would work.
So we.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the eleventh would work.
Oh, good, I've been wanting to change the meetings for Tuesdays for years. That's fine with me. Is that a problem with you, though?
It might be a problem.
Yeah.
So I'll I'll tell you what, um, I thought this would be a short item in in the interest of of time.
Silly, silly you, yes.
And I'll bring it back to the next meeting, but maybe in the meantime, I'll I will try to have uh.
Alternatives?
Well, yeah, we'll probably try to coordinate with your calendar. So if you get a call from Liz and she's looking for your calendar, you have to call her. You have to call her.
Just send out a, what are you calling, uh, send out a doodle poll.
No matter where you are, Dwayne. Does everyone, we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out, yes.
Yes, I'm not sure that we've had a successful doodle poll.
You mean when people don't answer the doodle poll? I always answer.
I'm not casting any aspersions on anyone, I'm just saying sometimes it doesn't work very well.
Okay.
Okay, so, and then I'll just turn it over with uh having gone longer than I anticipated, I'll turn it over uh to Matt.
Matt.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Members of council. Um, at.
I see you have a little report here on the animals.
The last meeting. Was that? Yes, at the last meeting, um, we were directed by you to begin a review of the uh, you wanted a status on where we are
On dogs, dogs in the park?
ordinance wise. Dogs in specifically Greenhorn Park.
Right.
So this is the
We were giving.
ordinance.
And you already got it.
Do you have these already?
Yeah.
There's the first part.
I got it.
I have more than that.
Is that this one, the one that says animals?
Yep.
Okay, we're fine.
So, so the first three pages of this were the nine point five oh point oh seven oh, which speaks to the animals in recreation areas throughout the city, which we call parks. Um.
Greenhorn, Minor, Discovery, Lewis. Where the heck is Lewis Park?
On Lewis Street.
Very good.
Over behind the hospital.
Ah, okay, that's right, it is a cute park.
Cute little park. And the city has kept it up well.
The first three pages of this handout are that ordinance. Um, and in review, I don't know how many times we've reviewed this, but upon this last review, it is extremely ambiguous in in certain parts. I could draw you to the second page, uh, section I, to where it drops into an owner or keeper of a dog may exercise a dog without a leash, an area specifically designed by this section, blah, 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 blah. And then it has, you know, the areas in which this activity may occur include those are mi- areas immediately north and east of Greenhorn Reservoir. So that sentence alone blows this particular ordinance completely out of the water, rendering it useless. Uh, because the areas immediately north and east, it just doesn't make sense. So um, this needs to be reviewed by staff and updated, which is the second part of the handout that I gave you, which has the.
Is there anything stating on ADA requirements too?
I don't have a second.
The ADA requirements on dogs.
I didn't get the second part.
With peop- owners with dogs with lea- on leashes don't have to have them on a leash if they cannot perform holding that animal on a leash.
We, that's in, that's a state law, right? Yeah, that's in, it's already in here. That's, you'll you'll see it in it.
So.
But without going through every.
What I'm saying is that on this is what I'm asking.
Without going through every word of this ordinance, um, I just wanted to stress that it is vague, extremely vague. It needs updated. So staff would be taking a deeper dive at that, getting it back to Dawn for legal review. And that that draws us into the update of the signage project, which is, I mentioned last meeting, it's been ongoing between the police chief and our maintenance and operations manager. Um, this is the current status of the signage project. So we can't just willy-nilly throw signs up unless they have a municipal code on the bottom, or else the police officers can't cite the person for doing what they're doing wrong.
Right.
So, and it it turns into a much larger project. Personally, I wanna take every sign out of the park and replace it all with nice, neat, orderly signs with muni codes attached. That is a multi-year project. You're looking at probably the second or third year just to get to this this handout that I gave you. So this is deep dive, heavy lifting between chief, back when he was LT, and Ben and things that I worked on before that. Um, wants and needs of Public Works, wants and needs of the police department. So, and again, I didn't wanna go through every word of this, but you can see the work that's gone into it between the two gentlemen seated in the back. Um, and then there's some notes in here from the city manager. Uh, there's a lot of ordinances, and I think most of you have been through reviewing with with us, reviewing and updating ordinances. It takes time, but we have been working on it. Um, if there's specific items you wanna discuss within this that you're seeing, please let me know.
So so I'm just looking at hours of use. Uh, it says closed ten P M. to six A M. Is that all of our parks?
No.
Cause I thought Greenhorn was dusk to dawn.
And that, well, that's another one there too, is that, uh, it's it's not the same across all parks.
Right.
Right.
And then there's the, we've we've all had that dusk conversation before also, because what are we gonna do?
What is dusk? Depends upon the time of year.
I just recently had that. This week, Ben and I met with Carl about what does dusk mean? There's those types of little things that need to be hammered down to to get all of this answered, so we can update all of the ordinances.
So I guess there's, uh, I I look at the, what what uh what Matt calls the sign project, because that's the ultimate that when everything's done, it'll appear on a sign. It really is a park ordinance review, so that the sign will be accurate.
Right.
We continue to work on it. Summer is not a great time for working on things because with with parks, simply because everyone's busy in the park. So it'll it'll be a little while, but we also wanted to let you know that the, uh, in fact, some of the things I've told told you, cause I I said, this is where the dogs need to be on a leash and this is, and up the hill, the dogs don't have to be on a leash. Actually, it's ambiguous exactly where, so forget I said that. Because, and and I think I've gotten that from other people.
I thought that was on a sign.
It 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 might be on a sign.
Yeah.
I don't know, but the, so anyway, we need to rework it. Um, we probably don't wanna talk a lot about the uh individual enforcement, because the police department does that, and we like them to have the, you know, they make decisions all the time. All the time on what to enforce and when. And, you know, if there's not a problem, even if there's a rule against it, I'm told that there's a law that prevents me to go over certain standards, which I exceed by a set, a specific amount on a frequent basis. They don't pull me over for that, and I appreciate that. So, so anyway, what what I, so really what we wanna say is, this is where we are, this is where we're going, it's not gonna be quick.
It's gonna take five years?
And um, well.
That's too long.
When you ask me for estimates of time, you know that I don't give them to you, and that's that's why. So if you wanna use yours.
Oh, mine would be.
We can, no, 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 I don't know, I I heard yours, you said five years.
I think June would be good.
I think we can.
Exactly, exactly, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, we can, we can.
I know.
There's just too much, too much going on, and what we do whenever we review these ordinances, we try to look at other ordinances that have been updated in other cities and use some of their best practices.
Yeah, don't re- ream it the way upright.
Well, yeah, that, we we try not to do that, although it always feels like it when you're going through these ordinances, to be very frank, so.
For many years within the parks, we we've had signs that are not enforceable signs. They're just up there as guidance signs. Um, and really, it's it's really in the spirit of the law.
Right.
You know, if if there is a a recurring problem, then of course we're going to dive into it deep and take care of it. Um, but but really, that's to stress that, that it's the spirit of the law. We can still operate underneath this ordinance and.
I mean, I thi- I think tying it all up is good, cause I see stuff where it says a six-foot leash, and then it says, oh, an extendable leash, you know, and.
But only, but you can only let it go six feet out.
Yeah, but and it says substantial, cause I need one with my dog, it has to be substantial. But I mean, my worry too is, I don't want YPD spending a ton of time at the park looking for dog violations.
Right.
There are a lot more things that they need to do in our town, you know, so.
Absolutely. More important things.
We would concur, and I think that the the police are are nodding silently up there.
Unless they're. Unless they're bored out of their gourd that day or something, you know.
Yeah, so.
I'm sure they would prefer not to.
I do have one question, please.
Certainly.
Had a conversation with another walker at the Greenhorn Park this week. The property on the hill, is that city or county?
Both.
The property directly above.
Greenhorn.
On the south side?
Some of it's city. The south side is city, the north side is county, right?
South side is city.
Are you talking where the large transient camps are?
No, I'm talking up by with the water tank.
The ditch.
The ditch, thanks.
That is city.
And where the bow range, the arrow and bow ranges up there.
That is city property almost to the top, and then there's a little piece of private that cuts around up at the top, but you can basically, it's it's pretty much the original.
Yeah.
So, okay, so up the hill is pretty much the city. What about over by the pump track? How far back, where the white posts are, the city?
We should probably show you on a map, because interestingly enough, there's part of it that's city-owned, but in the county.
It's outside city limits.
Outside the city limits.
Oh, okay.
And it's it's checkerboarded, you really, even I get turned around out there if I know, but and I know the maps very well, and I still get turned around and end up on Sheldon's property.
So we could do it in the air, so it's like, we're over here.
Oh, no, can we, can we continue? Can we, can we, my back is gone, so I'm just about done, unless you wanna take over running the rest of the maybe.
Sure.
I couldn't make it rotary yesterday, I was at the chiropractor, but it's not.
I'll share a map.
Well, yeah, we can share a map.
The city of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Was there anything else we could do? That's pretty much it, right?
Thank you, Matt.
No, that wasn't.
Thank you, Matt, and Ben.
That that concludes our uh report, there.
Thank you. Um, city reports, our council member reports, yes.
I'll make mine quick. I wanna thank buzzy and you, Madam Mayor, Mary Webb, Robin Richards, Amy, what's her, it's not single?
Evans, Evans.
Amy Evans for, you guys do a lot of work. We got a lot, lot more work that they're gonna do, but a lot of work.
Good job.
Um, Ben and Matt and your crews, you're you're doing the street crack filling, looks good, signs are out there. You get, you can see them, you can see that you're working, that they're doing stuff, so appreciate that.
Great, that's it?
Thank you.
Okay, gone.
Okay, uh, this report from the fire safety council, it was about a week and a half ago.
Oh, good. Yeah.
Uh, they're still waiting for some cameras to be put up by the water towers to prevent people dumping their trash. This would be the police department. I thought they were gonna put some cameras up by the water tower up Humbug, the road where they've uh picked up lots of trash. And that's the idea being with signs and a camera, hopefully will prevent people from dumping trash up there.
We do not have power there.
There's no power.
There's no power at the town.
What about solar?
There's minimal solar to fire the SCADA to for the telemetry, but that's it. It's not Maine's power. We did look into that.
I see you speaking now, Lieutenant Betts.
We did look into that, yes.
You can't have a camera with a small solar thing on it up there.
We could.
Seems like you could, and at least have signs up there that it's being monitored, so maybe people see that and not dump their trash.
Okay.
I think that's a key thing.[1705.61]
So here's a funny thing about this, I just did some, um, I have a, a relative that's doing the, the camera thing, and looked into that. Even phony cameras, you'd be surprised on how much it deters people from doing that, if it's posted.
Right, so, we can't use those though.
No, we can't.
So let's, let's not announce what we're gonna do.
I know, that's, that's, that's the other thing I got to think about, I'm like, probably shouldn't be announcing that, that we're putting cameras in specific spots. Just because.
Okay. So.
Yeah, well, that was the whole idea, we're trying to prevent people.
Right.
Right.
Piling up the trash again up there, cause there's quite a bit of trash, it was cleaned up, now it's already coming back again.
Is it really, wow, well, we need to work on ways to get through that.
A free trash day occasionally would be nice, once a quarter, whatever.
A free trash day would mean.
Cost.
No, well, no, a free.
Once a quarter.
When you talk about a free trash day, there's two ways to do it, there's probably more than two ways. But two, one way to do it is to build it into the franchise agreement with the trash holler, another way of doing it is to pay for it out of city funds. A third way to do it would be to get someone else to sponsor it.
Ah, good idea.
I, I, I'm, and there, there, I mean, there's permutations of that, but free trash day isn't necessarily free to us.
No, oh, no, we have to pay for it.
But the cost of city crews cleaning up would, are we paying more on that than what we would for having a free trash day? And then crews could focus on other issues that the city needs.
Something that we could look at, it's not been a tradition here, it has been in other communities that I've worked for.
It has, for my.
We like trash, and cheers, you're not trash, we'll come and pick you up.
We, yeah, we could probably put a magnetized sign on that, this, this, uh, this trash day.
See, Water Rica Transfer would do it for us.
I'm trying, I'm not trying, I'm trying not to talk very much, because I know I'm supposed to keep this meeting short.
My back's fine, yes, Debbie.
Okay, so I don't know if any of the rest of you, uh, received the email from Don Hall regarding some fire, uh, information, did you, Norm?
I haven't been able to check my email, got back just before the meeting today, so I probably have five hundred emails tomorrow.
Now, Publishers Clearing House only has this window for half. Okay, but anyway, it was a really good article, and I hope you guys read it, but.
Can you send that to me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, actually, Don Hall does a lot of research, and I appreciate him forwarding all of the other things back to us that are fire-related, and government-related, and that's all.
Thank you.
Um, couple things, we had the Home and Garden Show last weekend, it was a, yeah, it was good, good turnout, good, 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 uh, um, customer client base, I should say, rotation and stuff, so really, really good on that aspect. Um, secondly, I, are we, how's it working with the posting of the meetings on this? Cause I didn't see it in this last Wednesday meeting in the newspaper, yesterday's.
If they're not posted in the paper, they're posted on the building.
Right, but they used to be posted in the newspaper, all the time, so they're not.
We get what we get.
Okay, I didn't know what was going on with that.
To them, but.
I didn't get an email.
I don't think we send out emails, do we?
Yeah, we do.
You do?
It's, it's a Fido notice, it, it's not an email, it's.
Oh.
Well.
Per se, it's an, I'm, I'm.
To me, it's a good name.
Freedom of Information Act, that, that kinda thing, no, never mind.
No, Fido is the name of the company, don't worry about it.
Fido, like a dog, like a dog.
Oh, my God.
That reminds me, the dog park, yes. So, Debbie, did you have a dog park thing?
Did you have a dog park? I've been approached lately by three different people regarding the city promoting, supporting, developing a dog park, and I am not opposed to it having a controlled dog park. What I am opposed to is the location suggested, um, but I am certainly in support of it, because I, the main issue that comes up is they don't wanna keep their dog on a leash all the time, that they want their dogs to run. I get that, I have a dog, I know what that's about.
Yeah.
Of course you do.
Lightning, no, no.
Just for, in the, in the interest of disclosure, when people come to me to talk about the dog park, which I've received a number of, of that, what I tell them is that it's not so much the construction of the dog park, it's the maintenance of the dog park that's an issue. We have, and, and Matt could go into great detail, but he's not going to do it tonight, cause of the time. Uh, but we really have a guy in the parks, and then some other part-time people, and parts of other people's time, so.
You would be proud of me, I actually came back with a productive suggestion on having a non-pro, nonprofit develop one.
That's exactly my answer.
Excellent, and I, I just wanna make sure that we're on the same page, cause if I'm not on the same page with you guys, I will get into trouble, so.
Yes, you will.
But yes, what else did you hear, Joan, Mayor?
Well, that wasn't going to be part of my report, but yes, I've had, I've had, uh, several, um, meetings and phone calls regarding, um, looking into having a dog park, and my answer's been the same as yours, is that the issue isn't having a dog park. The issue is the maintenance of the dog park, probably fencing and maintenance. And so my suggestion was the same as yours, is to form, uh, a community group, a nonprofit, something, uh, where people do their own policing, they do their own pickup, uh, dirty stuff, and, and somebody probably needs to be there to make sure that the dogs don't fight. But anyway, that was my suggestion, and the gentleman that was seriously looking into it, was going around with a, uh, you know, with a list, and getting people to sign up, um.
No, I didn't.
While his dog barked and, uh, and disrupted the meeting.
He was there at a pool meeting in the park on Saturday.
Madam Mayor, the other issue is somebody's gotta mow the grass, uh, there's gotta be underground sprinklers, there's gotta be wa- water for that. There's gotta be, so it's gonna go on trim, so it's, there's a lot going on there.
But other cities provide this, so we, they shouldn't.
I'm not against it, I actually tried to, uh, I approached it with Brian, for a couple of years, to try as a, something that my kids couldn't get involved in, and, and it wasn't the city's issue, it was my issue. I just didn't, couldn't bring anything to fruition, because of all these different, we had, you know, there's a lot to get up, but I think you could get, I mean, if you have the land, or you get it donated, I, I think you get the fencing donated, I think you get lots of donated, but you're, you got upkeep, if you look at what Medford does in Ashland, they've got upkeep, they've got someone's gotta come in and, you know, uh, clean and pick up, because people don't pick up behind themselves.
No.
Much to the, the, they say they do, but they don't, and I use the Medford Dog Park all the time.
Do you see, um, on staff, do you see an on-staff personnel there? I've never seen it manned by a local.
I don't, I, I see people go in though from the city.
Right, they're out there all the time.
All the time, no.
Okay, okay.
And there are no bathrooms there, so you've gotta walk about, you've gotta walk to the skate park, I think, which is about a quarter of a mile, to the restroom, and so you, you run into some other, there's a lot of.
Challenges.
Yeah, not that it couldn't be done, it's just, there's a lot of challenges, and I think a dedicated, uh, grassroots group could probably put together a good, um, uh, thing and, and bring it to the, to the city at some point.
I agree, I agree too.
Flex Flash maybe, I don't, I mean, a dedicated group like that, I don't mean you guys.
Oh, that's just what.
I don't, I don't mean you would do it, but you're very, your group is dedicated.
Wants to do, right?
Your, your group is very dedicated.
Yeah.
There's, there's our.
Yeah, but you went from swimming pools to dog parks, so a lot of that happened.
We got the Greenhorn Reservoir, they can go swimming and manage the dogs at the same time.
My goodness gracious, this meeting has definitely, yes. Um, so, the, the one thing I did wanna really tell you guys about is, so right after our last meeting, which was April eighteenth, so April twentieth, I've been telling you about the Ciskew Revitalization Network, and so we had our, you know, we've been trading, there's ten cities that have been trading, um, tourists, visitors, and so we put together with Amanda, and I'm sorry that she's not here, to, uh, uh, Amanda from the Chamber of Commerce, she helped us put together, uh, an agenda for our visitors, that started with, uh, going to Zephyr Books and Coffee, it was great, because the band, you know, the local band that plays there for free, they were there, uh, playing great old-time music, we went from there down to the Franco-American Hotel, and Gary Nelson did an excellent job of hosting us, and giving us a tour of the whole facilities, including the back where he has the little western town, and they're trying to get him to open that for Gold Rush meets again this year. Uh, and then we went over and caught the wagon, did you guys see the wagon tour put on by the Historical Society? Well, we walked from the hotel over there just in time for it to start raining, in the open wagon. So we all just had our, our, you know, people were bring, going to their cars and bringing extra umbrellas, and we had the best time. And we drove down, the, uh, the truck that drove us was John Folk, who's a member of the Historical Society. The Folk Ranch, it's a huge, uh, historical, uh, thing here in the county, well, anyway, so, uh, Mike.
Griffin.
Griffantini was our tour guide, he was dressed in full period costume for the Victorian tours, did an excellent job. He sat there without cover in the rain and still did a great job, and John Folk pulled the wagon, and we, uh, had to name him, according to Mike, so we named him Chevy John, because he pulled us with the Chevy, and so, anyway, and we went all through downtown, it was excellent. Finished that in time to go to lunch, uh, over at the Minor Street Meat Market. Kenny Barnes met us there after the Easter egg hunt, uh, with his daughter, and met us there and gave us a little history about that building, actually, the two stores on the corner there of Minor and Broadway, and gave us a little history about that, and then we had lunch. And then he asked us if we'd like to go underneath the building and see where the tunnels were, not to go into the tunnels, don't get excited. So we did, we went underneath there, I have pictures to prove it, we went, and then he gave us the history of some of the tunnels, um, that were during the Gold Rush period, which was really awesome, and then from there, we went up and met again with Gary and Rosalie Nelson. And Rosalie gave us a ride on her carousel.
A ride on?
And, well, she was riding with us, actually, Gary did the, anyway, and it was so awesome, I mean, what a great experience. It's an old-fashioned, perfect carousel, it's absolutely in perfect condition. Uh, so we did that, and then we went up to the Tap House, which as you know, is, has reopened, and, uh, Kit Marshall was there and gave us a history of, uh, Etna Brewing Company, as well as her business there, uh, and then I had to leave, because my grandkids were here for Easter, but then they went from there over to the museum, had a tour of the museum, and then they came back for dinner at Strings, and then they went down to the, uh, to the Rex and the. Empire, yes, and at the Empire Room, they were having, um, a, a CD release for a local band.
Oh, yep, yep.
And so they got the tour of the whole facility, the Rex side, and the changes that they'd made there, and the Empire Room, and the changes, and then some of the history of the building. So it was a pretty amazing day, the people that were there really seemed to enjoy it. So, and we did ours, ours was to Weed, and we did a tour in Weed and, um, and Stewart Springs, and that was, that was pretty cool too. So, I wanted to make sure that I invite you, and you need to let me know if you're interested, so that we can put your name down. But there is going to be a gathering that is funded by the Ford Family Foundation for May fifteenth. It's gonna start at, I think it's at three in the afternoon and go until eight o'clock at night, you have to have the fortitude and wanna stay. But we're going to review what people have seen, and their, and, and all of their trades, we're gonna have, there's other pictures available, we're going to have a dinner, and it's going to be at Val Campo Farms, out down by Brazil. And so, uh, you know, each town is allowed to bring X number of people, I can't remember how many it is, five or six. But, uh, how many of you, who would be interested in going?
Maybe.
Okay, one, two, how about the rest of you guys? No, no, okay, so two, and I'm going. So, and then just for your information also, Lisa Nixon is going, she was on the tour, uh, did a great job. And, um, I think, uh, there's one more, and that would be the fifth one, so, uh, no, no staff members? Planning Commission, oh, it is a Wednesday night, you're right, May fifteenth, okay, and then I can, uh, bring it back and let you know what came out of it. But, uh, it's been a really good experience, and as you know, this is the second round of this, it started about four years ago, uh, where we did some similar things, but this is actually, we're actually in the process of helping smaller towns, and our town as well, in putting together, uh, a flyer, folder, some kind of marketing information, you can either put up a collier, at the chamber, at the city, that lets people know exactly what there is to do and see, the top five things, if you will. Uh, it's actually called My Town, My Three, so I guess it's the top three things to do in each town, which is pretty cool, because it, it's Wyrica, Montague, Cayman Lake, but, uh, Wyrica, Weed, Dunsmere, Mount Shasta, Fort Jones, Etna, Happy Camp. There's ten towns.
McLeod?
McLeod. I've forgotten some, obviously, I've forgotten two.
There's nine, there's nine cities, and then a few more community.
Well, McLeod is a community, and Happy Camp, cause I say Happy Camp well, that's most of them, anyway, it's really fascinating, and it's really good, to see people come together to help each other, and that's what this is all about, and I'm, I'm really proud of it, it's a good effort. That's all I have to say, except for my back's killing me, I'm getting out of here, so, anything else?
We have a short closed session.
No, we don't.
Oh, we do?
Oh, we still do?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Do we really?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to adjourn to a closed session.